It's 9:00 in the morning and we're gonna have a special meeting, like I said, and then we're gonna go into an executive session for a short period and then we'll have our workshop meeting. So Ms. Councils, you have our open.
Our opening today is gonna reflect on the unity theme that was at the Liberty Walk on Annalca Day here in Embryus. And then it was also evident at the parade in Crystal River also. But the theme there seemed to be, and the most often quote was, you know, let children be judged by the content of their character rather than the color of their skin. So I wanted to go back to something that I used to teach in the classroom, and that was Martin Luther King positioned himself in front of the Lincoln Memorial, looking over the reflection pool. And so he was picking up the last words of Abraham Lincoln's second inaugural address, which reads, "With malice towards none and charity for all, with firmness in the right, as God gives us to see the right, let us strive on to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to care for him who shall have borne the battle, for his widow, his orphan, to do all which may achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace among ourselves and with all nations." And that kind of picks up on the unity theme. And then the one quote that I was always impacted by as I was teaching the "I Have a Dream" speech was his purpose. And I think his audience there was our government, which we're part of. And he quotes, "In a sense, we've come to our nation's capital to cash a check. When the architects of our republic wrote the magnificent words of the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, they were signing a promissory note which every American would fall heir. The note was a promise that all men, yes, black men as well as white men, would be guaranteed the unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It's obvious today that America has defaulted on this promissory note insofar as her citizens of color are concerned. Instead, honoring this sacred obligation, America has given the Negro people a bad check, a check which has come back marked insufficient funds." So that was 80 years after Lincoln's second inaugural address. But he did end his speech with the concept of unity. But I've always had in my mind that image of the check coming back with insufficient funds. So I'm very, very proud that we have wonderful relationships in unity in Citrus County. But we need to remember that even though it's been 55 years, we're still not done. Do you stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you for that, Ms. Councils. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent?
Move and approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, second by Mrs. Powers, to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. It passes 5-0. Item number two, citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're gonna go to item number three, Educational Services, Mr. Heber.
I'm Kim Caravalli, the Student Health Specialist for Lake County. Ms. Alagretta and I wanted to just reconfirm with the board that the board is agreeable to allowing the Citrus County Health Department to offer the HPV vaccines and when they come to the T-DAT clinics at all our middle schools in February, it would be to the sixth graders that were giving the T-DATs to if their parents signed a form separate for the HPV vaccine.
How have we been doing with it? You know, what kind of results have we gotten as far as people taking advantage of it?
Last year, we vaccinated total about 20% of our sixth grade students. That's between the T-DAT and HPV. We did 222 T-DAT vaccinations and 136 HPV vaccinations.
So about half of the overall vaccination population took the advantage of it?
More than half, yes. More than half.
No repercussions?
We didn't have any students with adverse reactions to any of the vaccinations. And we make sure that the nurse that's assigned at school, because she has more than one school, but we make sure that they stay there all day, just to make sure that we don't have any problems. Each student who gets either vaccination has to sit in the room that the nurses from the Health Department and other school nurses are in for at least 15 minutes to make sure they don't have any problems.
And if I'm correct, it's not our staff that's administering these? These are the Health Department's staff?
Correct. Because HPV is not a state-required vaccination for school attendance, the Health Department is providing all vaccines now, so our nurses are not doing it because, and they're also signing a waiver that Mr. Bradshaw developed at State that this school district is not responsible for, because it is not a state-required vaccination.
And that is on a separate signature form, right, for the HPV?
Yes, which they've updated too, to make it a little, even more clear than it was last year. They've updated it and highlighted it in yellow, that they don't want their child to get it, don't sign this form, et cetera. And both forms are that way, because we tend to get parents sending in signed things, but they don't check off yes or no, and then we have to call and ask questions. So we're just trying to make it even clearer than we thought it was even before.
I supported it last year, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the extension of the HPV vaccine to sixth grade students as requested by the Citrus County Health Department.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Councils, second by Mrs. Powers, to continue to allow the Health Department to give the HPV vaccines to sixth grade students. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Support Services, Mr. Bishop.
Good morning. I'd like to request the board's approval of the instructional support recommendations as outlined on Goldenrod.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Powers, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the instructional and support recommendations as on our Goldenrod.
One amendment, if we can strike retirement to drop for Marsha Mullen and Michael Mullen. And actually, you know, Donna Olson and Jeremiah, we'll just do them all. I know that you're still giving us some time, Mr. Mullen, but I don't even like it being there.
Okay.
Well, Marsha would make you work for a while longer. She certainly did not hurt.
She's got some mixed results even about putting it on air.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Mr. Bishop, before you leave, just a quick update. I kind of was, I'd spoken, the board knows this, I spoke at our Summit, Elected Leaders Summit, and talked about, as the largest employer, we are always looking for employees. And if I recall, last week, we had about 30 open instructional positions and at least 30 to 40 support or other staff members. Is that still about correct?
Yes, sir, it is. Our instructional positions vacillate between 32 and 36 positions on a weekly basis. We are always in need of employees in our Food Service Department as well as our Transportation Department. We need bus drivers. So we're still out there looking.
And we've got an instructional position open, you know, we live in a construction community. We've got a position open for a drafting instructor that doesn't require a teaching certificate, but it does require certifications and just experience.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
So, thank you. I just, I think it's important that the public continue to know we are actively doing it, and like everywhere else, Pope County, I think they're at 100 and something that they're looking for instructional.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
One more question, just as a point, and it's off the top again. Are we retaining, are we keeping our new teachers that we bought in quite a number in my state, are we capping?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Swain has started an initiative this year to make sure that, because she's oftentimes the first contact that our new hires make here in the school district. So Ms. Swain and I devised a strategy for her to go out on a monthly basis, go out to the schools and reach out to the teachers that we've hired to let them know that there's people that, although we've processed the paperwork, we care about them, we want them to be successful, and want them to be retained here in Citrus County. We have not seen a mass exodus of those who we've hired, no yet.
If we're pressed to approve.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bishop. Next up, number five is our attorney, Mr. Bradshaw. Is there any other business that needs to come before the school board?
I did ask Ms. Wilson if she could come update the board on the governor's budget that she has and also third calculation.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm gonna hand out a few things to you so you have visuals. First, I'd like to go over the third calculation with you, which I think was the first paper I handed most of you. Up at the top, it should say second calculation, third calculation. I have to find my copy.
One has first through third.
Right, that's what we're, we're gonna go with the third first, since that's the current year we're in. That came out probably the beginning of last week or the end of the week before. If we look at it, some highlights, we got some more in base funding. Our numbers went up, which is our biggest reason we got more funding, 50.74 of unweighted FTE and 61.76 of weighted FTE. Our ESE did go up 178,000. And, let's see, transportation went up, that's another big one there, 87,000. Overall, 571,295 dollars from the second calc to the third calc, most of which you can tell is restricted. We lost a little bit in sparsity and a little bit in virtual. So, are there any questions on this one?
If a child leaves the high school and does totally virtual, do we still get paid for it?
Yes, ma'am.
How about that?
Right, we pay some of it back out, but we also get extra funding for that student. Okay, any questions on the third calculation? Not a whole lot, but it's better than taking money away from us, is what I thought.
The homeschool figure, that I was reading on my side, I was thinking, what is that? How is homeschool figured into this request? What I was reading was that the money's being given to homeschool.
I haven't.
I know we don't now, but I'm just wondering if in the future, yeah, in the future, is that what we need to be concerned about?
The only thing that I think sometimes gets confused is that people sometimes refer to themselves as homeschools, but there actually are virtual schools and we get money for that. And I feel we've kind of gone, we've actually been on the cutting edge of trying to have in-county capturing of those dollars. But that, I found in the community, there's a different, they'll say they're homeschool because they're at home doing their schooling, but they're actually just virtual school and they may be Citrus County Virtual School. And we, and there's a misconception, because we get money.
I'm not aware of anything at this time, it's, we're gonna have spent our money on homeschool, but we'll keep an eye out for that.
There is some legislation, and it's kind of been the same thing that I'm talking about, having to do with now homeschoolers could choose whatever school they want to play or attend after-school activities for anywhere in the state. That's the interesting thing. I mean, I don't know where it's moving, but there is legislation.
Somebody from Ocala could come and play here.
Yep.
Right.
And so without regard. If you take courses at our school.
No, this would be anyone for any homeschooler could do that.
And so without regard to the capacity of the school to choose.
Yeah. That is a proposed legislation right now, and I don't know that it's gonna have any legs, but it has been proposed.
Why did the lottery monies go down?
The lottery went down, when you do the second calculation, they just pull over the number from the ending of the last year. And we actually received almost 50,000 more in the school recognition funds than they allocate that out to all the districts, what's left for the school improvement funds, which we don't usually get until the end of the school year. So that went down to like 25,000 is what they're saying we're going to get, which last year we got almost 200,000 for the SACS. So.
All right, you're gonna have to back down one minute. So I thought we were getting more money for our school recognition, and then you said, but we're actually getting.
School recognition and school improvement are put in that category together.
Right.
So it's the school recognition money gets put out, given out to all the districts, and then once they have whatever's left over, then they allocate per FTE out to the districts for school improvement, which is your SAC money. So our SAC money went down, but our school improvement money went up.
Which has been the classic thing that they've done.
Yes.
And I found it interesting going back through this because of last year, depending on who runs the budget, if the House does one year, they handle that rollover allocation a little differently than when the Senate does. And in the end, it messes us up, and it's kind of your office that, bless your heart, is having to balance that. But the typical thing is, the recognition monies get paid first. If there were any monies left over, that's when the SACS would get paid. And we all know that the lottery is suffering. And I'm being facetious to say that, of why we're having to reduce, because all of those funding are coming out of the lottery.
Right. The school recognition money has, had already been received, and most of the schools got their bonuses out to the teachers before Christmas. That was about 250,000 this year. And so they're saying we should get about 25,000 for the enhancement councils. We never actually know how much we're going to get until they disperse it, which is usually the last dispersment of the fiscal year. So we really won't know till June. So those schools don't even know till next year what they actually got this year.
Right.
So.
Ms. Wilson, have you been here long enough where it used to be, we knew though, like in, oh, like October, November, I mean, we kind of had that, I'm talking about 10 years ago.
I was in finance, I wasn't doing budgeting then, so.
Yeah, that's right. Because I remember we would, back then we knew, and now it's, you know, it can be before the end of SAC, before.
Right. Any other questions on the third calculation?
I wonder if the lottery, would the lottery, is it like nationwide happening? Is the weekend a thing for that?
I'm not really sure, I can look into that for you, though.
It's just.
Yeah, I think it's just a Florida lottery, but I could find out where the money goes for that if you'd like, up to me, too.
The public still is very unclear about how the lottery is funding or not funding schools. And I know we kind of had to deal with this, all of us in public conversations with it. I mean, the first thing is, and having kids in college, it's great, but the first thing is, all of the Bright Futures goes right off of the top for college, but it looks like it's coming to Citrus County, the way they show it. And so they go, oh, look at, you're getting all this money from the lottery trust fund, but it's really not. It's going to the colleges. It's just showing as an allocation to us.
Right, and WTC does have students that receive the Bright Futures, so the money flows through us. It comes to us for them from the state lottery trust for the Bright Futures.
But it's not going to the classroom, right?
No, it's going to pay their tuition over at WTC. The next item we have is the budget calendar. So we're just finishing up auditing from this last year and getting ready for next year. So some of the highlights today, I'm going over this calendar with you, that is on there. February 20th will be an all-district-wide administrators meeting, and I will go over the budget and what we know at that time. The governor's budget has been put out, the House and Senate should be coming out in the next few days, so I will go over that with them and the processes and different things we need for them to prepare for us. They, the schools will then have the next month, pretty much, to prepare their budgets and the district sites. Ms. Swain and executive team will do staffing the last week of February, which runs into March 2nd. When we get back from spring break, we will go over, the executive team, myself, Ms. Swain, and probably Mr. Baumer, will go over the district budgets with everyone. And then we'll start pushing the human resources budgets. We do that once a month, April, May, June, July, and August, we'll send over HR budgets based on people leaving, people coming. Of course, when we get to the August one, that's our most accurate budget. We have personnel coming over into our budget. We will advertise July 28th for the budget in the paper and adopt the final budget on September 11th. The board meeting is actually on the day it's due this year, so we don't have to change the date. And then by the end of September, we'll have our TRIM information into the property appraiser to finish all our TRIM compliance.
All right.
You have any questions on the budget calendar?
Calendar, if everybody good?
All right. So the last thing I gave you is, the governor has put out his recommendation, and I compared it to the third calculation on the sheet. He prepares his budget in between the second and third calculations, so some of the numbers look kind of skewed, in my opinion. If you'll notice, it looks like we're losing ESC funding, but he bases his off our second calc numbers, not our third. So we probably would be getting more if those numbers hold true. Some of the other highlights, we're gonna lose our digital classroom allocation.
No, that's an error.
Okay, well, that's his.
I have it, I have his budget in front of me. And his wording says specifically, "From the funds, a specific appropriation in 692 of 80 million dollars is provided for digital classroom allocation, is provided in Florida statute with a minimum amount of 500,000 to each district." What they've done is, he called it in his budget, "Digital learning." It's not actually distance, it's called digital learning allocation, and it is for that full amount.
All right.
So I saw that when his, when there's been some confusion on that. And I had talked to Chris Doolin, because that's an issue that he and I usually work together on, and he affirmed it is in the budget.
All right.
So we aren't losing it. So that distance, that we're showing is distance learning, it's actually called digital learning. They're changing it to, but it is the digital allocation.
We assumed that that's what it was, even Dr. Gettys' contacts in DOE.
Well, even when they saw it, they were like, the governor's doing the name thing again. But his notes in the budget refer to it as digital classroom allocation, and the numbers coincide with the change.
Yeah, the numbers are about almost the same.
Almost the same, yeah.
Yeah, so only because I panicked when I saw that, because I'm thinking, I don't know what we're gonna do. Well, that's a big deal to us, I mean, and.
But to your knowledge, they're not gonna change the.
No, the Senate is planning, we're waiting for that this week, but the Senate's indication is they are gonna hold it 500,000, which has been, the House has been trying to push that to a 250,000 minimum to the counties. And then by pupil numbers, by FTE numbers, the trouble is, for Citrus County, we lose substantially, as do many of the small district consortiums. So the small district consortium has been very invested to maintain that 500,000 threshold. For us, I think in past years, when I talked to Dr. Gettys, it was over 200,000 difference if they dropped that base funding. So we want to continue to push for that 500,000 base funding to keep level funding, which I know, I don't have to tell you, Mr. Mullen, level funding is still not funding. It's, just means we're cutting less.
Is that what's going to be requested in the home school area they're asking for, was to have enough digital learning for home?
Yeah, they're trying to get allocations anywhere they can. But we, our digital classroom will be protected, at least in the governor's and the Senate's budget. Who knows what's gonna happen in the house?
Some of the other noticeable things is, of course, he has our property values increasing, and the millage he has at the same rate that it was. So depending on what the final outcome is for that, we could have a higher property value, but still end up with the same general funding, tax funding, based on the millage, if the millage would go down. If you see overall, the total local funding is going up 2.2 million, if you go almost to the very bottom of the page. That's all based on our property values. So that's where the House and Senate like to hit us a lot, is by lowering our millage. So overall, in state funding, he's giving us about, let's see, 1.4 million in state funding, but increasing our local funding by 2.2. Of course, the governor usually comes out high, the Senate and the House come out low. Usually they settle in between. It was closer to the House and Senate this last year where they settled. So just wanted to give you a preview of what it looks like based on where we are right now and what he's proposing we receive.
Okay, any other questions? I do wanna make one note, so we'll all have it on our calendars, that the July workshop will be on the 31st, which is the 5th, which will be actually the 5th Tuesday.
Yes.
Which will allow it in time in order to.
Advertise.
Yeah, advertise. Now, that may work out better, too, because on the 30th is the new teacher orientation. So I assume we'll, you know, we'll plan on being in town, everybody's, you know, is looking at calendars. So the 31st will be the board workshop.
Thank you for reminding me. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Right now, okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mullen, did you have anything else? Thank you for giving that, do appreciate that. Any board members have any?
Yes, I'd like to see a show of hands, how many of you watched the Kendall High School on Bay News 9? Very good, very good.
I've got the video if anybody wants to see it.
I have it too. I have it too. They are, they're going great guns there. And Mr. Coon is like a proud father. He is, he just beams when he talks about this school. Anyway, I had SAC yesterday at the Kendall High School, that's it.
And just several things I wanted to add, don't we wait to the end of the workshop rather than do it now?
Well, actually, you mean, are there other topics during the workshop? That's fine, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, that would be fine, yes.
We had a SAC meeting here with the Kendall Middle yesterday, too, went very, very well. Jerry Switek came and talked about certifications with the academy at Citrus High and got a little bit of attention. You know, I felt, maybe they felt the IB program was gonna be threatened because everybody wanted to go to the Switek Academy. Enjoy Martin Luther King Day in Memphis, I'm glad they changed the times, because I was able to do both Embryus and Crystal River. And then I just have to compliment the entire county on a very successful summit meeting that we had last Friday. It was very cohesive, very civil, and I feel very confident that all the governments are moving in the right direction to make us a better county.
I'm good. Yeah, I had Embryus Primary School SAC yesterday, and I think the summit, too, I was good at, we could be there, I know Ms. Bryant had another.
FISBIT.
FISBIT meeting. Fizzbit meeting, so.
That's okay.
But it's always interesting when we all get together and talk about things, but it was a good meeting. So that's all I have.
And then, so you gave that some speech.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
Okay, no other business needs to come for the board, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and we're going to open up an executive session for some security matters, so we will go into executive session at this time. Only those people who are involved in this can stay, 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 stay.